Good evening. Welcome to the evening meeting of the Board of St. Lucie County for Tuesday, January 12th. As you know, this is our only evening meeting, so we're very pleased to have you all here. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? And now for the adults, the treasure hunter's pledge. Board members, will you join me down so we can be entertained by Longwood Elementary?
I am a leader and conqueror. I am intelligent and strong enough to overcome any obstacles that may stand in my way. Nothing will hinder me from reaching my goals and dreams. I pledge that life will not pass me by. I am determined and will give my best all the time. Failure is not an option. If I fail, I will display resilience. I am a proud member of Guys With Ties at Longwood Elementary School.
GEMS is an all-female mentorship program designed to empower 4th and 5th grade girls. The mission is to provide the girls with the tools and guidance to encourage positive behaviors and promote high self-esteem. At this time, I would like to present to you GEMS at Longwood Elementary School.
Young ladies, young ladies, do you know who you are?
Oh, yes, yes, oh, yes, yes, we are the GEMS. G. E. M. We are the best. We want success.
The World Drumming Ensemble is a new portion of the after-school music club at Longwood Elementary. Students have developed focus, listening, teamwork, and respect while having the best time anyone can have in school. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to present to you the Longwood Elementary World Drumming Ensemble.
Thank you very much, the teachers, the administrators, and the parents of these children. Please stand so we can recognize you for your generosity of sharing their talent with us. (Applause) Thank you very much. And as you know, we start our meetings with children because we are about children and only children and their future. We also believe in the arts, and we infuse the arts into every school. And what you see in front of us, view is part of the talent that we get shared with all the time. So I hope you appreciate this wonderful talent, and you can share with the public that this school district is committed to children first, and we are committed to the arts. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We will proceed now with our special orders of business. The first thing on the agenda is the St. Lucie County First Responder Appreciation Presentation. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are happy that we've got some representatives here, our first responders. Governor Scott proclaimed last week First Responders Week, and we thought it'd be nice if we would honor those first responders within our county, as well as those that work for our school districts. So I'll turn this over to Ms. Patrick, and ask the board to come on down.
Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Gent, yes indeed, Governor Rick Scott did declare for the second year in a row, January 4th through 8th, as First Responder Appreciation Week. As a school district, we shared the information with our children and our staff in order to recognize and celebrate our law enforcement personnel and our fire service personnel. Our first responders are integral in keeping our communities safe and supporting us as citizens during our daily routines and as we encounter unforeseen hurdles and tragedies. Our first responders are the heroic ladies and gentlemen that we depend on and appreciate for their unselfish dedication to our well-being. At this time, St. Lucie Public Schools would like to recognize representatives from our local first responder agencies and offer a sincere thank you to the service that they provide. As I call your name, those of you who are here representing the agencies, I would invite you to come forward and accept a plaque from the superintendent and our board, and if you would please remain standing so that we may take a group photo for this event. To begin with, I would like to recognize, excuse me, Chief Brian Ruther, who represents the St. Lucie Public School Safety and Security Division. Working in conjunction --[682.12][682.12](Applause) -- working in conjunction with agencies, all personnel of Safety and Security Department for St. Lucie Public Schools are committed to creating and maintaining a safe environment for staff, students, and visitors, as well as protecting district-owned properties. Next, representing the Fort Pierce Police Department, I would ask that Deputy Chief Frank Armando, please come forward. The Fort Pierce Police Department's primary mission is protecting our community and offers many services that are designed to empower our community and to also prevent crime in Representing the Port St. Lucie Police Department, we have Assistant Chief Richard Del Toro. Through courage, knowledge, and integrity, the Port St. Lucie Police Department is committed to superior customer service and remaining one of America's safest cities.[758.01][758.01](Applause) Next, we have representatives from St. Lucie County Fire District, Deputy Chief Paul Raymond and District Chief Mike Merritt. The Fire District's mission is to protect life and property by providing safe, efficient, and quality emergency services, fire prevention, and education for our community.[788.23][788.23](Applause) And we would also like to recognize our St. Lucie County Sheriff's Department. Here tonight, we have Chief Deputy Gary Wilson, Captain Charlie Scavuzzo, Major Jerry Rothman, and Major David Thompson. The St. Lucie County Sheriff's Office pledges to protect life and property and maintain order through continuing a commitment of service, integrity, and the highest standard of ethics and respect for individuals and rights of the diverse population.[834.61][834.61](Laughter) So with all of you present, again, we would like to thank you for the caring and quality service that you provide to each and every one of us every day, and we would like to honor you with a photograph. Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll.[857.51][857.51](Laughter)
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Gent, it is my distinct honor and privilege to present St. Lucie Public Schools representative for the 2015 Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award and Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership. The Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award was established in 1997 to recognize exemplary assistant principals for their contributions to their schools and communities. The candidate must have at least two years of experience as an assistant principal at a public school. She has four. Each candidate is also required to have served their current school for not less than one year before filling the application. She has four. Please join me in welcoming the Outstanding Assistant Principal for St. Lucie Public Schools, The Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership was established in 1988 to recognize exemplary principals for their contributions to their schools and communities. Each candidate in this category must have served their schools for the entire year prior to completing the application. And tonight, you will find that it's sort of a dynamic duo. Also, from Women Point Elementary School, the Principal Achievement Award winner for
Each month, it is our distinct privilege to be able to recognize staff for their outstanding accomplishments and customer service. We do this by acknowledging them with a star award. And this month, from Transportation, we are so very pleased to bring forward two individuals. As I call your name, I will be sharing with our audience the reason why you have been nominated for this prestigious award. If you'd please make your way to the front, let the superintendent and board acknowledge you and honor you, and then we will take a group picture, so please remain. First, I would like to recognize from Transportation, Mrs. Linda Maginofonia, and she is recognized because of a memo that was given by Ms. Heather Gray, who is the head swim coach of Fort Pierce Central High School. The memo said, "I want to take the time to let you know how wonderful Linda is as an after-hours driver for my swim team. She has been our driver twice now, and I would request her, if I could, every time we have a meet. She is very personable, punctual, and helpful with loading all of our gear. She is an asset to St. Lucie County's transportation's team." Again, it's all about customer service and the way we treat our audience, our customers, and our community. And also from Transportation, we have Mrs. Diana Bernal, and a memo from Ms. Lily Beauchamp, who is principal at Manatee Academy. She says, "I want to take a moment to commend one of our bus drivers for her assistance in an incident that took place earlier this year. On one afternoon, at approximately 1:00, a 1st-grade student began running away from campus. The student ran east on Heatherwood Boulevard toward Heatherwood Housing Development. Several of our staff members followed the student as she was making her way toward the sidewalk. The bus driver from Bus 2647 was driving parallel to the student and slowed down, which caused the cars and buses behind her to also slow down. She served as a buffer, so the student could not run across the road. The driver's actions assisted the student remaining safe from the traffic on the road, as well as allowed our staff members to escort the child safely back onto campus." Again, the caring and the concern for our children. And from our Facilities and Maintenance Department, we have Cindy Hill and Tracy Maxwell. Cindy has expanded her role in bookkeeping for both maintenance and facilities. Tracy is being recognized because she is a permitting specialist for the building department, and both Cindy and Tracy continue to take on more and more activities for these departments. They continue to build a culture of support for others. In 2006, they began to take the lead on a fundraising event for maintenance and facilities. Summer intern and scholarship programs was their focus. The event, a golf tournament, has proved to be a great and valuable success for students, as well as for staff, and it serves to build morale in the department, and it provides value for our students regarding opportunities for their futures.[1355.97][1355.97](Applause) From Media Services, we have a presentation for Mr. Octavius Robinson. Since joining WLX TV's team over a year ago with a strong technical skill set, Mr. Robinson has proven to be a voracious learner for all things digital. He eagerly dives into projects and has received many accolades for his congenial and his very patient manner when he is on campuses taping for shows or working with students and teachers to put together programming. You will always see him wearing a smile, and he is always willing to roll up his sleeves and do whatever it takes to see that production runs as it should.[1405.53][1405.53](Applause) We always talk about the support that we appreciate from our community and our volunteers, and so we'd like to recognize Ms. Cindy Connor as a volunteer from Port St. Lucie High School. Ms. Connor has been volunteering at Port St. Lucie High School for three years. She started by supporting band banquets, but this has expanded over the years. At the end of last year, she became the coordinator for the band volunteers by making certain that all band volunteers were cleared as per district protocol, and she became the go-to for establishing schedules, schedules for volunteers at football games, schedules for volunteers at various competitions, and schedules for volunteers at general practices. She also assumed responsibility for submitting volunteer hours to the district, and we thank you for your spirit of support.[1464.13][1464.13](Applause) Our final award for the evening goes to a team, a team from our school-based maintenance department, and it goes to Mr. Tom Giannini, Thomas Bradley, Jackie Burgess, and Jean Matthew. A memo from Principal Latricia Woolard is what brought these fine individuals up for the star award. She indicated that this team has worked diligently to help keep my grounds at St. Lucie Elementary immaculate. They do whatever they can to make and keep me happy. There is nothing that I ask them to do that doesn't get done. I really appreciate them and would like to recognize them for all of their hard work and dedication to the schools in St. Lucie County. And thank you, Ms. Woolard. The National Beta Club is the largest independent nonprofit educational youth organization in America, and for more than 80 years, it has prepared today's students to be tomorrow's leaders. And that is what we are going to be honoring several of our students for this evening. Student leaders in Fort Pierce Central High School's Beta Club have taken the initiative and demonstrated talent and drive. These trailblazers take rigorous course loads, participate in athletic competitions, volunteer their time in their community, and still find time to organize and participate in the opportunities afforded to them as members of the prestigious Beta Club. At last year's State Beta Conference, they placed 3rd out of 17 teams in the Quiz Bowl competition and qualified to compete at National Beta Convention this summer in Nashville, Tennessee. This was a first for their group. Here, they were recognized as first-place winners in the Meeting of the Minds competition. Most recently, Fort Pierce Central High School received the honor of being recognized as a National Beta School of Distinction. This national award speaks highly of the school's commitment to academic excellence and illustrates dedication to preparing students for college and career readiness. As you have already seen, we've got a group of energized and excited leaders right up here before you. Cody Nicholson holds the national award that they received in Tennessee. Sarah Ramkisson is also part of the group. Riley Kicker, Andrew Caputo. Rue Kindred holds the state competition award that the group received, and Bryce Starr, the president, holds with him the John W. Harris Leadership Award. This is a very special award. Normally, it is presented to a student based on his or her sponsor's recommendation. Bryce took it upon himself to bring Beta to Fort Pierce Central High School. Not only did he do that, he worked hard to get the group all the way to a national competition, and it was the leaders at Beta who nominated him out of 70,000 students for this award. As we prepare the students for a photograph, parents, teachers, supporters of these fine students, if you could please stand, we celebrate your efforts and our ongoing commitment to working together for the sake of our students.[1760.01][1760.01](Applause) And Board Members, the Beta Club has something for you as a takeaway. We have that for you. They brought it back with them from National, and you will be receiving that at the end of this meeting. of this meeting.
We honor our students, and we honor our wonderful staff and volunteers who make this district such a wonderful place to be. With that, we'll be on to our CTA report. Ms. Rodriguez?
Good evening. It's been a very busy start to 2016. I'm pleased with the collaborative work that we have been able to do so far with our new district administration and with the positive moves towards resolution of a number of issues and some longstanding issues in our district. All of this bodes well for the future. As an update, I mentioned to you that we would be bringing a number of our educators to Tallahassee. So far, the count for the total rally stands at about 3,000, so our folks will be joining about, you know, 3,000 of their best friends in Tallahassee on Thursday. And look for us on the news. We'll be having a reporter that will be riding with us on the bus. So our folks are going up there to do the work of our district, really, which is to let our legislators know that enough is enough. We want some sense brought back into the legislative process with laws and rules that make sense, that actually support public schools and not something else altogether. We do, as a union, have continuing, ongoing concerns about our students and employees in schools in the Green Zone, where turnover and frustration continues to hamper everyone's success. I don't think anyone would deny that that's one of the contributing factors. As a union, we've begun to discuss the systemic issues around what is going on there, and we want to encourage the school districts and the school district and its leadership to do the same. The issues are more than more training, better equipment, recruiting someone from New York or Michigan. We have to begin to look at what systemic decisions have been made that have placed students and staff in the Green Zone in tough circumstances. As a union, we believe that the decisions that were made in the past were with the best intentions at the time, but we need to revisit those decisions because of the collateral results, and maybe I'll use the word damage, of grouping mostly poor minority children in the same schools over time. Study after study since the 1950s bears witness to the simple fact that this type of segregation, whether intentional or not, does not serve the students or staff well. This conversation will not be easy or comfortable. It's happening around the country. It's happening in our state. It needs to happen without the pointing of fingers, placing a blame, or jumping to conclusions. So to that end, on March 3rd, the CTA will be beginning this conversation with a group of community leaders. Hopefully, we'll have your support as well, and our members, because if we don't, who will? The time really is now. Our community struggles with the telltale signs of poverty and hopelessness: juvenile crime, domestic violence, drugs, gangs, and transients. Martin Luther King's birthday is on Monday. All of us will be marching in the parade, so it's appropriate that I quote something that he said in 1961 to the Florida AFL-CIO, in Miami of all places, about unions and being active participants in the civil rights movement. And we do believe that education is a civil right. What he said was, "Our needs are identical with labor's needs: decent wages, fair working conditions, livable housing, old age security, health and welfare measures, and conditions in which families can grow, have education for their children, and respect in the community." He went on to talk about education and the crisis of unemployment and low-wage jobs, all of which impact our community today. The conversation that we need to have cannot be one that's external to the school district, but one in which the school district plays an integral role in working to teach the community's children and provide the equality and equity that we need for all of them. This cannot happen if we perpetuate a system of separate but equal in a group of schools in one zone, because quite frankly, you need to hear that things are not equal. When children need more, employees have to work more. And what's happening in Green Zone schools with the loss of personnel has a lot to do with that. I'll personally be inviting each one of you by phone so that we can have a conversation about our March 3rd symposium, and I hope that you all will consider participating, because it is a conversation that we're going to have, and we would like for you to be a part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. CWA? We're on to the consent agenda. Remember, you have the consent agenda in front of you. I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Hilsen, second by Dr. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five zero. Mr. Jen, your recommendation, please.
I recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Board members, we have a recommendation from the superintendent. Is there any item you need to declare a personal conflict for or discussion or separate vote? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Ingersoll.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hilsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. This is going to be a fast meeting. Mr. Jen? Updates?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, last week, the state released the graduation rate for the districts across the state of Florida, and the good news is, is that the county, St. Lucie County Public Schools continues to make positive strides in this area. They rose 2.3 percent. So the trend is in the right direction. Over the last six years, there's been a 10 percent gain in the graduation rate. Some of the most impressive increases were at Lincoln Park Academy and St. Lucie West Centennial School, where Lincoln Park was at 6 percent and Centennial was at 5.7, literally a third of a student away from 6 percent themselves. And LPA had a rate of 98.6, St. Lucie West Centennial at 82.3. Both schools were well above the state average. Also, Fort Pierce Central High School came in above the state average at 80.1 percent, and Treasure Coast High School at almost 83 percent above the state average. So this has been my highest priority. That next to student safety in our schools is significantly increasing our graduation rate, and it's not a matter of if we will, but it's we must. We must continue to work on this. We have some strategies in place. We'll be sharing that with the board members in two weeks at our work session regarding what we're doing in our school centers. I believe we have the appropriate leadership in place at our high schools right now, and it's all hands on deck. So I would hope that next year at this time, not hope, but I'm confident that we'll pass the state rate, of which we're only 2 percent behind on that, and be in the 80 percent range. That's my personal goal for our school district. It's a stretch goal, but it's something that I think that's attainable. There's no other higher. That's our whole core mission in teaching and learning, is that we graduate young men and women ready for the world of work or for college, so that they're college and career-ready or work-ready, and all of our efforts are going towards that, and so I have every confidence that we'll do that. We are knocking on the door of the county to the north, who was at a rate of 77.7. We were, I'm sorry, 75.7. We were 75.5 right behind that. So my goal is to pass that and to be knocking to the county of the south's door very rapidly as well. I told the staff how competitive I am, but it's really not about, and I told them a little funny story I won't share publicly, but I am very competitive. I beat my granddaughter, my five-year-old granddaughter, in ping pong, 21 to nothing. And... She was only four at the time, and, but anyway, no, all seriousness, it's not really about being competitive. It's about our students being competitive. It's about our students being competitive in the workforce and in our nation. And again, as I've reiterated, it's our highest priority, and we're proud of the gains that have been made in the past. I contacted Superintendent Yost and congratulated her for the gains that were made under her watch, and we're looking forward to even greater gains in the future. Secondly, I want to thank the Office of Teaching and Learning under Dr. Wild. They had this seminar conference last January 4th over at IRSC, and it was a spotlight on science, technology, the arts, and talked about strategies and academic plans and discussions. And we had some sponsors that sponsored that: HMH, Indian River State College, Regional Center for Nuclear Education and Training, Laser Tech, Walmart, and some other agencies. So I wanted to commend Dr. Wild and her department for a job well done. Whenever you put together a conference like that, that's just a major undertaking, and it was well done. We had an opening by Dr. Massey, and we continue to build partnerships there, but good job. Also, as mentioned already by Vicky, this is the Martin Luther King Commemorative Celebration. The theme is "To Dream Forward, Choose Peace, Equality, and Change," and there's numerous community activities that are going on at this time that our schools are involved in and that will be involved in, as well as the board and the district in the parade itself. I want to do a plug for Port St. Lucie High School. Their drama department is presenting a play, Disney's The Little Mermaid, and the performances will begin January 28th, and I believe run through February the 7th. And the tickets in the showtimes are posted on the district website. And also, in the leading role of Ariel is one of our board members, the only male board member that we have. It's his daughter. Mr. Ingersoll's daughter is in the lead role of Ariel. So we always know that Mr. Madden, Patrick Madden, does a fantastic job. Did I say that just like I was supposed to?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Okay. But Patrick Madden's been at the school since it opened, and the original drama instructor, and is well-known around the country, and does a fantastic job. So encourage folks to go on out there and enjoy that, as well as to help support the drama program. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Jen. Attorney's report?
Thank you, Chairwoman, hencely members of the board and Superintendent Jen. There is no attorney's report.
Thanks, Molly. Board members, updates on your committees or other announcements? Mr. Ingersoll? Dr. Mills?
Yes, I want to, first of all, wish CTA and Vicky, I wish y'all a safe trip to Tallahassee. Wish I could be there with you, just not feasible at this time, and a successful trip with our legislators. Ms. Holly and I will be going on the 3rd and the 4th to Tallahassee to also speak to legislators then, and so, and we encourage anyone else that could do so as well to go and talk about those needs that we have as a public school district. Also, would like to just say to Mr. Jen, I like your competitiveness. That's a good thing, so I appreciate you being competitive in the areas of making us number one on the chart with public school education. And I do have a few announcements with the MLK. We have on Friday the MLK Spelling Bee that will be at White City Elementary School, and the time begins at 7 o'clock. We have the Awards Breakfast on Saturday, the 16th, and that will begin at 8 at the Indian River State College-Treasure Coast Public Safety Training Complex. And of course, we will have our grand parade on, it begins on Avenue I and Dr. Martin Luther King's Boulevard, and the lineup will start at 9 a.m. The parade starts at 10 a.m. And after the parade is the festival in the park, directly after the parade that starts at 12, and will be at Lawn Woods Stadium.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Ms. Holly? Ms. Hilsen?
I just wanted to say the Martin Luther King Kickoff Dinner at IRSC was very well-done and well-attended, I thought. But the guest speaker, Virginia Baker, who is the, oh, I thought this, I'm sorry, Vernisha. Baker is Palm Beach County Administrator. She spoke, and she was amazing. She actually had grown up in Fort Pierce and at one time in her life had picked tomatoes and ridden buses with other migrant workers as a young girl, and what she had to say was so important that I wish every high school student, or even middle school student, could grasp where she had come from and where she is now and how powerful her message was. She was just captivating, and I would love for her to come back and be able to speak at some of our schools, because I think she has a very clear message for our students that do struggle, because she struggled as a young girl, and she overcame, and now is in a very prominent position, and has been in prominent positions before this one. I also wanted to comment on Lawn Woods' musical program and just put a plug in for our arts, and those after-school music programs are just the key to opening doors for children that may not like the typical subjects. It seems like when we offer other opportunities with the arts, sometimes it gives the students a passion and a reason to come to school that may not always be as evident. So I thought they did a lovely job, and I'm always impressed by our students, but I thought that was very good tonight. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Hilsen. Last Friday, we had our five-county work group of school boards to make sure we're on track and stay focused when it comes to legislative session, as you know, it started today. So our priorities have stayed the same. We are following, there are 352 bills, I think, that are prefiled dealing with education or children. We will be following 52 of those through the Education Consortium and through our five-county work group. There's also other groups that are following other bills of significance. We have a group of people following the early learning bills, one following kid care bills. So there are a lot of people whose eyes are focused on the best interests of children, and we just hope that we can convince the legislature that the best interests of children should be a priority of theirs every session, but especially starting with this session. And as you know, in our Constitution, the only paramount obligation in the Constitution of the state of Florida is the education of its children, and we would like for them to step up and actually honor that part of our Constitution. We have a work session on January 26th at 9 o'clock in the morning in this room. It's open to the public. It will be a slightly different format than our evening formal meetings, but we are going to one meeting a month for our regular business. So our next regular meeting will be February the 9th at 5 o'clock, and we hope to see all of you in attendance or be able to watch it afterwards. There being no un-scheduled speakers, we are finished with our business and adjourned.